Words and deeds, they might be aligned with yours as we make decisions for the taxpayers and the residents. Father, we're mindful too of the health issues of many people, but particularly today, we lift up our friend Les Mason. We thank you so much for how much, how many people he has mentored as a legislator and the effectiveness that he's had in Topeka. Father, we ask that you be with his wife Vicki and the rest of the family, and we ask that you be with the caregivers and the doctors and help them understand and know what to do as they progress with Les today. Father, we're mindful of all the things in, in our community that need your, your guidance. And Father, we thank you so much for the moisture you provided, and we ask that you continue that moisture for the ag-related matters in our county. And Father, we lift all of our prayers to you through your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Uh-oh, something did, Chair, Mr. Chairman, law enforcement's here.
Good morning, Sheriff. We note that Sheriff is with us today, so we have adequate security. After my chair comments, we may need them. Folks, the special session's been called by the governor, and the legislature will meet on June 17th for the purpose of revising tax policy. I have some feedback on my microphone. Could you turn it down a little bit, please? Thank you. Now, I may not have a mic, but I'll try to make do anyway. One of the concerns of the chair has been a statute that the legislature put together in 2021, and it's called Net Revenue Neutral. And I have asked our legislators continuously throughout this session to repeal this statute. There are several reasons. The state doesn't comply with net revenue neutral. Why do the counties and the cities? The cost to the state is in the millions. This special session that they're going to have is supposed to be about tax savings. Why don't we do some tax savings and actually reduce government costs that are not necessary? The bill continues to cause additional work for our county clerks, and the additional work is not compensated. The cost of net revenue neutral, they're mindful of that, so they passed Section 16 of the Session Laws, Chapter 80, providing for the cost to be paid for by the state. However, the cost is really all the paperwork that needs to be done and generated by the clerk's office and sent out to the individuals. Quite frankly, the net revenue neutral fails to save any tax money, instead costs us approximately $3 million or more per year. The bill, when drafted and as amended again this year, here is the amendment. I'll give it to the clerk and ask her to post it on the website, because I want this thing repealed. If taxpayers don't like a budget that a local taxing entity proposes, they know how to find us, and we don't need another mailing sent out to people to tell us that we're exceeding net revenue neutral, whatever the dickens that means. This law was ill-designed with gotcha tactics, transferring power from local control to state supervision, which is unnecessary and, in my opinion, undemocratic to the people of Fannie County who have a direct link to the five people sitting here who set their local budget. It includes the six people on the county commission, the six people on the Board of Trustees, the seven people on the school board, and all of the other taxing entities here in Fannie County. So I am asking our legislators, since the special session will be a new session of the legislature, that the only way that they can work any bills will be on the Committee of the Whole, please repeal 2024 Session Laws, Chapter 81, Sections 15 and 16. Those are the chair's comments today, but I hand that to the clerk and ask her to include that end of record. I know, it's on my chair and I'm done.
Is an amen appropriate?
I don't think so. We do have a consent agenda, commissioners?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agendas. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This morning, Madam Clerk, do we have any persons wanting to appear for public comment?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, very good. We'll move on then to the business agenda, and is Ms. Miller here for IMA?
She is on Teams this morning.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Good morning. I can. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Thank you for helping us out again this year. Please proceed with your presentation on employee benefits. Please tell the viewing public who you are.
Great. Good morning. My name is Jayla Miller. I am an account executive with IMA that works with the Fannie County team on your employee benefit programs. I am going to share my screen just for all of our benefits this morning, and I will walk through our presentation. So I'm going to briefly walk over claim performance reporting both for 2023 and so far this year for 2024. We have provided a 2025 renewal claims projection for your budget purposes. I will talk high level what we are looking for strategy considerations at for this year, provide you all with some benchmarking, and then finally end with an analysis of the GrowWell clinic that you put in place almost three years ago now. To get into the financials, so this is looking at the 2023 year-end review, so comparing January through December 2023 through January through December 2022. When we look at those two years, in 2023, our medical, per employee, per month, that is what PE PM stands for, was up about 7.9%. That is just slightly above trend. Our gross pharmacy per employee per month was down about 2.3%. Dental was down about 12.4%, and when we blend all of those together, then the overall impact in the plan year 2023 was an increase of about 3.8% per employee per month. When we look at how claims ran, the actual versus expected, so we look at this two ways. First, being paid claims, you can think of this as your cash flow, so what actually came out of your account this last year, and then incurred claims. So anything that happened in the 2023 plan year, so incurred between those 12 months. At the paid claims, the plan ran at 100% of expected claims. This was due to the plan in 2022 hitting what we call aggregates, so the maximum liability. Everything over that aggregate was picked up by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and so there were no runout claims to pay in 2023. When we look at the claims that incurred in 2023, the plan ran at about 107% of expected claims, which checks out based on the medical coming up about almost 8%. In comparison on large claimants, so we look at this every year just to see how many people are driving the claims, we had 27 claimants exceed 31,0250 in claims. This is a quarter of the county's stop-loss deductible, which is 125,000. These 27 claimants totaled 2.89 million in claims, and this was 63% of the total claims in 2023. For reference, the prior year, there were 26 members who had 2.17 million in claims, which was 55% of total claims. So we did see an increase in large claimants this year. That really was driven by two things, inpatient admissions and surgeries that really drove that medical increase. And then pharmacy was the, saw a 12% decrease in total number of scripts that were written in 2023, which is what was driving the decrease to pharmacy. So overall, the plan ran much better than it had the prior two years, and so far into 2024, that is, that trend is continuing. But any questions on the 2023 year-end review before I move on?
No, please proceed.
Great. So for 2024, we are looking at data from January through April. So so far this year, medical is down 15.9%, and this is due to a decrease in the inpatient utilization that we saw in 2023. In fact, that's a 64% decrease overall so far this year. Pharmacy is up about 3.9%, and this is due to just the increased cost that we are seeing in scripts that are being written and filled on the plan this year. Dental's down about 18%, and so when we blend it all out, so far the plan 2024 is running at about 9.8% decrease. When we look at budget, actual versus expected, the paid claims ran at 112% of expected, so this is being attributed to the runout that is happening due to the 2023 plan year. So there were some larger claims that happened at the end of 2023, or at least in the second half. They might have been filed in the first part of this year, and so that's why we're seeing those paid now. When we look at claims that are incurred so far in 2024, the plan is running at 92% of expected claims, so we are seeing that down over last year. Large claimants, we have eight so far this year that are over the 31,250, quarter of the stop-loss deductible. These eight make up about 494,000 in claims, and this is 35% of total claims. So so far this year, large claimants are performing much better than they have in years past. The renewal will be released to us in the, actually, the end of this month, so we'll have a better idea of what 2025 renewal looks like here coming up the next few weeks. And that gets, leads me into our 2025 medical projections. So we are looking at the three areas in the health plan that the county pays for, so the first one being medical administration costs. So this is what you pay to Blue Cross and Blue Shield to use their network, for them to process claims, et cetera. We are currently on the third year of a three-year agreement to keep the administration rates flat, so that's why you see no change to administration rates there. We are projecting a 10% stop-loss premium. This is based on what we are seeing in terms of Blue Cross releasing stop-loss renewals over the first five months of the year, and so that's that 10% number here. And then carrier expected claims, we are anticipating about a 10.7% increase to expected claims, and so that is what we are looking at potentially for renewal this year. This would be just slightly above trend, but with the plan running at 107% in 2023, those claims are going to be weighed the most in Blue Cross and Blue Shield's renewal calculation. And we did take that into consideration in this renewal projection as well. Any questions on anything I've covered so far?
Well, it appears to me that our year-to-date is down 9.8%, and yet for 2025, they're estimating a 10.7% increase in costs.
Yeah, we're, and a lot of that is again due to how Blue Cross looks at their underwriting. So they put the most, they look at 36 months of data, and they put the most weight on the middle 12 months. And that middle 12 months and your 2020, so that would have been 2022, gets about a 26% rating. 2023 is going to have a 42% rating, and 2024 to date will have, or I'm sorry, the 2023 plan year will have about 42%, and then there'll be about 30-some percent rating on 2024. So when you add up those two years, 22 and 23, that ran a little bit warmer than what we're seeing now, that's going to impact the renewal calculation.
It is what it is.
Yeah, unfortunately. Now, if we, yes, so yes, that's exactly right.
All right, please proceed.
So moving into 2025, in order to help mitigate some of this increase, not just for what we can get our final numbers to be for 2025, but also moving forward, we are going to continue to evaluate plan design. As you know, we've added, we've increased deductibles. We've added two plans in the last few years, a $1,500 deductible. Last year, we added a $3,500 deductible. One of the things that we are looking at for 2025 is to add co-pays for office visits, particularly on that $3,500 plan. We've, right now, office visit is subject to deductible and coinsurance, and that works out better when you have a lower deductible. There's less that you have to pay towards, but for those members who are needing to see specialists, you know, maybe more regularly, that deductible and coinsurance get, trying to meet that $3,500 adds up really quickly, and so we don't want to discourage anybody from seeking care, and so we're looking to add those co-pays to assist with that. The second co-pay we're looking at is increasing the co-pays on brand and specialty prescriptions. This is something we've looked at frankly for the last couple of years, and we just haven't made any changes. But with the increased cost of medication, there are more brand and specialty medications on the plan, this makes sense to look at this year. Secondly, we want to evaluate contributions, so increasing the employee contributions on particularly the $500 deductible plan, really encouraging those that want to keep that plan to buy up essentially, and so we'll put together several contribution illustrations to share with the administration team for their evaluation, to bring to you for final vote for renewal this year. We're also looking to build out new wellness initiatives for 2025. Wellness has been something that the county has done off and on. We're really looking to bring it back, meet people where they are, and give them resources to, to help, you know, to bring, keep costs down over time. And then we'll work with the county's administration team on just the health plan budget and making sure that we budget enough to keep the health plan reserves healthy, and so that we don't get into trouble over time, the, the plan will continue to stay funded.
Commissioner?
Yeah, Jayla, I've got a question. When you compare Fannie County to your other public entities that you cover or take care of, on the wellness part, do, can you tell if our wellness costs are paying off compared to others that don't offer it?
Yeah, so there haven't been any wellness costs last couple of years. The, essentially, the wellness program that you were paying for a few years ago kind of, I think, got funneled into the clinic cost, and so we're working with our team to really kind of target specific areas, right? Mental health is a bigger one, you know, physical health, how can we work with both the clinic and what initiatives can we put in place? So we're looking, we'll be looking at initiatives that are budget-friendly as well as can maybe make an impact. In terms of what other counties and municipalities are doing across the state, you know, some are really leaning on what their carriers, what their TPAs are doing to help with wellness, so maybe some, you know, just baked-in programs. Blue Cross, Blue Shield also has some wellness programs we can look at, so it really just kind of depends what's going on within claims and what the goals are for each wellness program for each municipality.
So you're not breaking out the wellness costs, that just goes towards the clinic cost, so when our employees...
Yeah, I think that's what happened, and frankly, the wellness costs can be built into the health plan cost. It, it can all come out of the same bucket, so to speak.
So there's really no way of comparing?
At this point, no, because we, and maybe Robert or Jenny, if you want to chime in, I don't know if you guys have had any particular wellness costs that I'm not aware of this year that we could use to compare with.
Please introduce yourself. Good morning.
Good morning. Jenny Hamel, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. We more or less eliminated the wellness plan when we went to GrowWell so that we could fund the GrowWell piece, so this is something we're looking at bringing back for '25. We really have not done any initiatives for the last two years on the wellness piece of it.
But there's, IMA has no way of tracking the, what we're spending upon GrowWell than compared to other public entities.
Do you have a way to track GrowWell?
Yes, yes. So I mean, frankly, I have one other municipality that is using a clinic like GrowWell, and I think the pricing is the same because it happens to be the same clinic entity. But that is something that I can take back to my team and just, even, not even just in Kansas, but across our entire book of business, what are municipalities spending on things like on your site or onsite clinics to help give you a better idea of the cost of that?
Well, it would help to have the numbers, you know, to tell if it's a good investment or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Pisney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jayla, I appreciate, always appreciate you each year with how clear you make things, and thank you for that. My question is this, when you start referencing plan design and, and doing things with the plans, maybe adjusting benefits and so forth, I'm trying to look out into the future on beyond even 2025. What might, what might that do to the potential administration costs after our three-year flat commitment with Blue Cross expires? It seems as if that might add to administrative costs, administrative work.
That was a great question. You know, so when we look at plan design, we're typically more so trying to affect claims cost rather administered, rather than the fixed cost, the administration and the, and the stop-loss. What we have been able to do, and we did it successfully for Fannie County for 2024, is we just have to go back to Blue Cross and negotiate those administration costs and ask for concessions on those if they raise them, and essentially give them a reason why they need to stay flat. So that is something that aside from the plan design, we'll continue to do on your behalf, is to go back and negotiate every year where we can on both administration cost and stop-loss premiums.
Thank you.
All right. One of the things that any employee watching this presentation would want to know is if the commission makes any changes to the plan, what is going to be their cost?
Yes, so once we get the...
Quantified for us to be able to make a decision, because we're going to get input from everyone during work session here shortly, and while it's nice to have these bullet points, there's not a cost to either county or employee determined. We can't evaluate it. Good ideas, but there's not a dollar and cents to it.
That's correct, at this moment in time. So as I mentioned, we will receive the firm 2025 renewal in the next few weeks from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. At that time then, we will have to go back to them and request options that have some of these changes that we are discussing, so that we can get a firm cost on what that would look like for the overall plan, and then from there, we'll be able to put together the contribution modeling to say, this is what the employee's going to pay, this is what the county is going to pay based on the county's, you know, preferred budget. I believe, and please, Robert or Jenny jump in, but in the past, what we've done is we get the renewal, we do the work to get everything put together, and then we do bring that back to the department heads to discuss the options with them, so that they have some, we can get some feedback. Typically, we have included a couple of the commissioners in those meetings as well, and so from there, then, we use that feedback to, to bring you final firm recommendations before we make the final vote on this. before you make the final vote on this.
All right, well, what I'm looking at is a work session on July 1st, and...
I will...
Do we have a meeting prior to July 1st to hash out what recommendations we're going to make? What's the timeframe so that we are fitting in with your schedule, Mr. Administrator?
Absolutely. That will depend on when we get the renewal. I believe last year, we received it around June 24th, 25th, somewhere in that timeframe. Blue Cross typically needs about, these would be what they would call custom options. They need 10 business days to turn custom options around. From a timeline perspective, I don't know if we would be able to make that July 1st work session, it's probably more so going to be middle to, to end of July to have the first pass essentially.
That puts us in a bind for budgeting purposes.
So, what we can do, and I believe we did this last year, is that once we get the renewal, we will give you those numbers immediately, so that you have something to put in your budget, we'll start talking about, you know, what kind of the max would be, so that we know what goes in your budget is the max that you would be funding at, and then, we would work kind of backwards from that number to get to the final recommendations, making sure that we do not go over the threshold of what you place in your budget.
All right, I've taken too much of your time. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, any summation?
In summation, I, I do one more, or a couple of quick slides here, just, this is the benchmarking summary, so you can see how Fannie County compares to, average appears as our book of business and Western Kansas. I won't go into detail here, but this is something for you to, to have to review. And then, the GrowWell services, we have found declines in claims-related office visit and ER visits, so so far, the clinic seems to be working very well. But in summation, you know, we, we do expect a slight increase this year for renewal, but we have spent the last couple of years talking about potential plan design changes that we hope will help keep some claims costs down over time, and then, we continue to work closely with the county's administration team on the financial component of the health plan, just to make sure we keep you within a budget as you go to set those within the next month or two.
All right, wonderful. Jayla, thank you. Mr. Administrator, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
All right, and we're going to wrap this up by Commissioner Jones wanting a printed copy of this, and so, staff, please make a printed copy available, if any other Commissioners want a copy.
Yeah, but then...
I understand that, do you want a printed?
No, I've got it.
Commissioner Jeeves would like one as well. Jayla, thank you.
Yes, thank you all, have a good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On our agenda is hearing from our auditors, Ms. Teresa Dazenbrock and Kristin Sekovic. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Teresa Dazenbrock, Kristin Sekovic, with, hopefully, you've had a chance maybe to flip through the audit report itself, the slides I know were in your packet, the audit report has been posted on your website. Pages one and three, one through three of the, the bound audit report itself are, does include or present our audit report. It is an unmodified audit report for 2023 on your regulatory basis financial statements. I'd encourage you maybe to take a minute and try and review the audit report, read through it, at least those three pages at some point, to get an understanding of how the audit process works and such. Also like to point out on pages 111 through 115, the two reports that are reflective of the single audit aspect of the audit, and they indicate there were no question costs on the federal programs, so that's a good job. Pages six and seven of the bound audit report reflects your statement one summary, statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash for the year ended December 31st, 2023. In total, the county's funds were just over $62 million in cash at year-end, and that did include the related municipal entities. Overall, that was an increase of about $11.5 million, with about 1.9, or not 1.9, $109,000 of that rather being in the general fund. The rest of those increases were in reserve funds, capital project funds, the employee benefit. Looking...
Please, I have an administrative voter.
That's okay, Ryan, I'm glad it wasn't me. Yeah, me too. That, that is fine. Slide number four takes that unencumbered cash balance across all your funds and kind of gives you a 10-year perspective of what the changes have been. From 2014, 2015, you had some capital projects going on for building, then you can see here in the last two or three years, we've had significant increases, a lot of that was a result of the COVID grant money that started flowing in, and at the same time, the county's ability to actually use the money and spend it on purchases and capital outlay projects was delayed as purchasing problems occurred nationwide. We did end there in 2023 with our cash balances well above the trend line that's presented. In the 10-year period overall, it's about a $27.8 million increase in the cash balances. Now, the graph on the next page breaks this out, kind of by your fund types, where we've broken it into four areas. The, the lowest, smallest line on the bottom is the related municipal entities in your audit report, they stay pretty consistent and are pretty low balances overall. The red line, the next one up, is your restricted funds, those are grant monies, funds that are restrictive to what they can be used for. You can see here in 2020 through 2022, those increases were largely due to the COVID grant money that flowed into the county, and then, that came down in 2023 as about $4.7 million of the ARPA grant money was spent or reallocated up to your other funds. The blue line is your, what we would call your reserve funds, those are funds you're setting aside over time to use for specific projects and stuff, so equipment reserve, special road improvement, building projects. This year, it was up about $11 million, with $4 million of that going into reserves for future project construction, about $1.3 million for the LEC and courthouse, $1.4 million for infrastructure improvements, $1.3 million for equipment reserve, $1.3 million in capital improvement reserve, and $1 million in special highway. So, that's where those increases occurred. Then, the green line is the, what we would call the operating funds, it's your general fund, those departments that actually operate a department. The increase over time there is in part due to the tax lid, recent increases here in 2023, where we were up 5.2 million overall, $3 million of that is in the employee benefit fund, so that will help as you're addressing your budget issue that you just heard about. About $704,000 in the ambulance fund, the health department, the juvenile detention center, the library maintenance fund, all experienced slight increases also. Slide six, then, is a comparison of the receipts and the expenditures over a 10-year period in your operating funds. We're going to start with the line at the bottom and work up. That red bar is your expenditures, and it's transgression over a 10-year period, you can see in 2021 down to 2022, expenditures were down, and then, we were back up here in 2023. On average, for the 10-year period, expenditures countywide for operations have averaged $34.8 million per year. The blue bar above it, the solid one, is the receipts over a 10-year period, and those have averaged $36.6 million per year over this 10-year period. And then, the dotted lines by each of them is the linear transgression from 2014 forward. Now, then, the next two bars at the top that run pretty parallel to each other are the receipts and the expenditures based on 2012, and then, projected forward for inflation. So, you can see receipts, expenditures, as we adjust them for inflation, have ran pretty consistent, same trend, but it is good to see that the, the actual is quite a bit less than what that inflated amount would have been. Page seven reflects your receipts for your operating funds. There's a lot of information on here, we're, we're going to rework this next year and simplify what you're looking at, but overall, there's really four areas that have the largest share of the operations of the county. The general fund is the, the light green bar, or green piece of the pie rather, at $11.5 million, about 24% of the total. Percentage-wise is pretty consistent to where it was the prior year, so not much change there. Public Works is the, the blue turquoise piece of the pie, running about $5 million or just under 10%, which is down a little bit percentage-wise from the prior year. The law enforcement is the navy blue piece of the pie at just over $9 million, that was up from the prior year, it's up about $2 million expenditure-wise at about 19.6% compared to 17.8%. And then, the other large piece of the pie is the yellow, is the county employee benefit fund, which includes not only the health insurance, but employer taxes and such also, capers and everything. That was up this year from $7.6 million in 2022 to $8.4 million, so we were just under 18% of the total. Now, on page eight, if we look at the receipts for the general fund, and we include the law enforcement fund in this, in part because in 2014 and 2015, law enforcement operated under the umbrella of the general fund. When the tax lid went into effect in 2017, the sheriff fund moved out because it was exempt from the tax lid, and then, the county attorney's office moved in with the law enforcement fund in 2018, based on interpretation of the tax law, tax lid at that time. So, so we've left those two funds there together for comparative purposes. You can see here in 2023, we are up a little bit. In total, the, the general fund portion of, of the receipts for 2023 were 55.4%, whereas the law enforcement fund was the 44.6%. Then, looking at the receipts of just the general fund for 2023, hopefully, you didn't lose your slides also, there we go, okay. The taxes make up the biggest portion of the pie, as you're well aware, however, that is down this year. In 2023, we were at 59% compared to 82% the prior year. Now, I don't present the law enforcement's pie because 95% of its money is coming in from tax dollars, so didn't make sense to present that. Within the general fund, then, other items to point out, the transfers this year were at 13%, that's up from 2% in the previous year, so in part, that increase is also going to influence the percentages of the other pieces of this pie. You also saw a significant increase in the use of money and property this past year, it was at 19% compared to 4% the previous year. Since the tax dollars were the largest portion of that pie, we've broken that down on page 10. You can see ad valorem taxes made up about 46% of the total, that's really where it was last year also. Sales tax this year was at 41%, that's up from about 38% the previous year, and so, then, the, the others are adjusted accordingly, there are minor changes. So, the next few graphs, we're going to discuss the factors that are going into the, that ad valorem tax percentage, and give you some 10-year history here first with valuation for the levy year, so this 2022 levy year is to fund the 2023 budget. So, 2014 through 2022, you can see the trend, real estate has been a nice steady increase, the difficulty the county's experienced in its budgeting has been with the oil and gas, that black piece of the pie. And you can see there in 2017, it took the big drop, after a big drop in 2016 also, but then, 2017, you were also dealing with the tax lid going into effect, so those are some of the things that impacted the mill levy, which is presented on page 13.
Madam Auditor, one of the things that's really consistent on this is what my chair comment was, this state ad valorem tax at 21 and a half mills has been incredibly consistent, despite having $1.9 billion of excess money, we're having a special session on property tax, but not ad valorem tax. I hope that whatever influence you have over the legislature, I'd like to see that little blue piece increase substantially over the next four years, since they're sitting on an excess.
Well, and if you're looking at slide 12, Mr. Chairman, that's the state assessed property, the valuation that the county gets to levy taxes against, and they assess the utilities and, and that type of entity within the county, so that's where that's coming from, but, but then, their, their levy is applied to the, the state's 1.5 mill levy, they apply it to everything, so. So, they, they definitely take advantage of the increases, and they didn't hold themselves to a tax lid at the time. The mill levy that's assessed against those valuations here for the county's share of the ad valorem property taxes is on page 13, and you can see from 2014 to 2023, we have averaged over that 10-year period 45.26 mills per year, which is slightly over the 2017 level. The lowest point in this 10-year period was in 2015, when we were at 38.8 mills. Our high point was in 2022, when we were at 49.9, and then, that was brought down in 2023 to 49.87.
Good news for the taxpayers, last year, we kept 2.46 mills, so next year's report will have a nice little...
Be further drop, and it's nice to see it's starting to be below the trend line, so. So, the spread, the lowest to the highest spread was just over 11 mills. Now, the tax dollars that that mill levy generated are shown there on slide 14, this is for the, the year the taxes are collected to fund the budget. 2014, we collected $19.5 million, 2023, we collected $27.2 million, so on average, over the 10 years, it was $22.2 million per year, so a fairly good-sized increase in there. The decrease that occurred in 2016 and 17 was really because of the drop in valuation. Now, slide 15, sales tax is a large part of the tax dollars, as we mentioned earlier, sales tax collections, you can see the trend line there, have grown steadily here in the county. We went from just under $4 million in 2000... We went from just under four million in 2014 to about six point two million in 2023. It's down slightly from 2022 because in February of 2022, there was an unusually large consumer use tax that came in for this, both the city and the county.
Nearly seven hundred and forty thousand, correct, Theresa?
Probably by the time it was allocated out, because I think the city's share was pretty large, couple million and five hundred thousand here at the county. In the last three years, the the sales tax collections have exceeded the trend line. So that's good. The the decline in 2017, I believe that was because I think the horse thief mill or sales tax dropped off that year for a little while. And so as you go into the budgeting process, it's always kind of, we think, good to have some idea what's been going on with the counties that are similar in size to Fannie County. Population-wise, over ten years, they've all stayed pretty consistent. But valuation on slide seventeen, comparatively, everybody has seen increases. You can tell the two that relied more on oil and gas valuation, Fannie County and Ellis County, the changes that occurred in in those middle years with them. But recent years, everybody has seen a tick-up of words. The levies that they've then been applying to those valuations over the ten years, you can see those fluctuations. Now, Fannie County is the highest of the counties. We were at forty-seven point three six five mills for 2023 compared to Reno County with the lowest at thirty-seven point seven six mills. No, we're not too far off from Ford County, and and then Sird County is the next highest in the group. The spread lowest to highest from Fannie to Reno is nine point six mills. But I always say you can't just look at what the county's share of the mill levy is. When you're looking at the taxpayers, you need to look at what are they paying in total? Because every county operates a little bit different in who's paying for what within the county. So if we look at slide nineteen, it takes the mill levies compared by the cities for for all the taxing units that a taxpayer in that city would pay. So in this instance, Sird County, liberal, ends up being the highest here in 2023 at a hundred and eighty-two point five mills. Hayes is the lowest at a hundred and eighteen point seven mills. So about a sixty-four mill difference between them. Now, part of that is because Hayes is the only city in this mixture that doesn't pay for a community college. They've got.
Could you move to page nineteen? You're on eighteen.
Yeah.
Oh, we're off. So that was the correct.
Oh, excuse me. We must have taken something off. Yeah. Sorry about that. I didn't realize that my notes didn't match what we sent over. Dodge City is the second highest, and and then Garden City were the second from the lowest at a hundred and sixty mills. Now, the difference because of that community, those community colleges, on average, the five community colleges' mill levy averages about twenty-eight point six mills. The community college here in Garden City is at twenty-five point three mills for 2023. So that was the receipt revenue side of the picture. A couple of slides looking then at the comparison of expenditures overall for the general fund and the law enforcement fund. We went from 2014 being a little under fifteen million to 2023 being over just over twenty million in total. Percentage-wise, the general fund is fifty-six percent of the total expenditures there, with the law enforcement being forty-four percent. Dollar-wise, well, percentage-wise, general fund expenditures on slide twenty. General government makes up the largest portion at fifty-six percent. That's down from sixty-eight percent the previous year, in part because the transfers this year were at thirty-four percent versus nineteen percent the year before. So the more money we're able to reserve and move over into reserve funds for other projects coming up, that's going to impact that other percentage. So this year, we moved out about three point nine million from the general fund into reserve funds or other operating funds. The law enforcement, their expenditures, the sheriff's department and the jail make up seventy-five percent of the total expenditures, with the county attorney at twenty-one percent. That was consistent with the prior year percentage-wise. Their transfers were up a little bit in 2023 as they were both able to reserve some for future equipment needs, and that amounted to about three hundred and thirty-two thousand. So that was four percent of their total expenditures. And then the the last graph I wanted to go over on twenty-two, I guess there's no graph there on your copy, is the debt outstanding for the county. You probably see this at budget time and when you're talking about any changes in debt, but not on a routine basis. Detail on this is on page seventeen of your audit report. We ended 2023 with general obligation bonds outstanding of six hundred and fifteen thousand. And that was for Sird District number three. It matures in about twenty years, in June of 2042. And then there were four point three million in what we call finance leases. These are lease-purchase-type transactions. The three leases that had the largest balances were the HVAC system.
Yeah, it was working so well.
It started out so well, but we still owe four point eight, four point two million on it at the end of twenty-three. And it doesn't mature until 2032, although I think plans are in the works to reserve and take care of that earlier. Comparatively to those other counties we looked at earlier, you know, if we, the total long-term debt of Fannie County at the end of twenty-three combined there is four point nine million. With the information that was reported to the League of Municipalities, debt per capita that we calculate, Fannie County's debt per capita would be a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That compares to Sird County, which is seven times higher at eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. And Ford County is at two hundred and eighteen dollars per capita.
You don't have that on a chart like you used to give us, do you?
No.
Those were always kind of interesting to your, our debt compared to other counties.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So 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 you are the, other than Barton County not having any, Fannie County is the lowest. Okay.
Teresa?
Yes.
Some years ago, your predecessor by the name of Gary Shapley said that his recommendation was for us to maintain a balance of about thirty percent. And tell tell us where we are today, if you can.
The the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers, their recommendation has usually been that for your operating funds, you may, you try and maintain a cash reserve of twenty to thirty percent because a governmental entity has timing issues on when all their cash comes in, receipts come in, and they also, you also don't have the ability just to go get an operating loan to manage the time when the receipts aren't here yet. So at the end of 2023, in the general fund, your cash balance of eight point two million covered seventy-one percent of your operating expenses in 2023. So seventy-one percent.
In good shape.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And that that's after your transfers that had occurred for the reserve funds. Most of the, most of the operating funds are in good shape.
Appreciate that.
So that's the numbers on the audit. Before I turn it over to Kristin to run through the couple of letters real quick, can I address any other questions for the commissioners?
Trying to figure out the slide that I'm looking at. First, you broke down the, thank you, Mr., you you broke down the reserves by restricted and operating and so forth. But so when you're saying seventy-one percent, though?
That's.
I'm confused.
That that is just within the general operating fund itself. That was the cash for just the the general fund, which is part of the cash in those operating funds. It's not all-inclusive. There are other funds in there, but it's probably the larger balance. Let me see here.
For some reason, I'm finding that slide, but.
It's number five, I believe.
Because I guess, I guess what I'm trying to reconcile in my mind is, you're talking about a range of twenty to thirty percent. You mentioned seventy-one percent. I think that can be misinterpreted by us having way too much excess cash, and that's not necessarily true. So how do we explain that to the public and to the taxpayers?
I think you have to evaluate and look at what is your plan of use for that cash balance, which is what your budget process will.
Some of it's specified. Some of that use is specified, like for buildings or?
No. I'm sorry, Long. The general fund cash, that that seventy-one percent, that doesn't include any of the other funds. That is strictly the general fund. Okay? Whereas the operating fund numbers that are included on graph five, that does include other operating funds of the county in addition to the general fund. So it includes the employee benefit fund, the ambulance, the health department, the law enforcement, all of those thrown together. It does not include capital improvement, equipment reserve, the HVAC reserve, those type. Other questions on the numbers? Kristin, I think it's your turn then.
Thank you. Now we'll hear what we did right and wrong. Good morning. Please introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Hi, I'm Kristin Sekovek, one of the auditors with Louis Hooper and Dick. The first letter I'm going to go over is what we call the letter to the governing body. It's a required letter as part of the audit. This letter hasn't changed from the past. It goes through what our responsibility as auditors are versus yours as management. It lists out any significant risks we identified in the audit. We also let you know that there were no changes in accounting policies. There's also no estimates included within your financial statement. And then for financial statement disclosures, because those can involve judgment, we let you know the most sensitive one would be your compliance with Kansas statutes. There are also no difficulties encountered during the audit process. Attached to this letter are any journal entries we became aware of that we made during the audit process, and then also the representation letter, which was signed by the administrator, treasurer, and clerk. And we aren't aware of any consultations with other accountants or any other significant findings that we need to make you aware of. And then the other required letter that we provide is what we call the management letter. We aren't going to go over the management letter in detail with you today as we've gone over it in detail with the staff involved during the audit process, and we've also went over it when we did the draft audit. And also, we're going to go over the letter in detail tomorrow morning at your department head meeting. But we did want to point out that you didn't have any material weaknesses this year. The one material weakness that you had in the prior year letter was resolved during the year. So the only comments that we do have in the letter are just best-practice suggestions. So within the letter, after the cover letter, so on page three, start your comments. Page three are some of the comments that we had just for the county in general. Page four were the comments that we had for the agencies and departments of the county. And then the remaining three pages of the letter are actually comments that were resolved from the prior year. So the county did a really good job this year on putting a lot of effort into resolving some of those comments and getting them cleaned up. But if you have any specific questions on any of those comments as you go through the letter, please call the office, give Teresa or I a call at any time, or you can come to the department head meeting tomorrow.
When you say in your letter that the diversion fees from the county attorney need to be paid over on a routine basis, routine isn't defined, and I don't think there's a statute that requires the timing of that, what is your recommendation on routine?
I think you have to evaluate how many funds are on hand, and does it make sense to leave it there or maybe bring it in and let the treasurer manage it to earn a little bit of interest on it at least, minimize maybe potential fraud. But the statutes for a lot of the departments, officers, I think defer back to deposit weekly. So I I would suggest at least bi-monthly maybe or monthly at a minimum.
All right. We'll take that under consideration. Anything else? Questions from the commissioners about the engagement letter or the audit letter?
Appreciate your, good work.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thank you. We thank all the county staff that assisted in the audit process because we can't do our job without them doing theirs, so.
We'll see you in the morning for the department head meeting and the detail to the audit.
Okay.
Very good. We'll continue on our agenda. Next up is request for funding. Dr. Ryan Ruda is present along with, oh, Scott. How are you? I'm sure Doc will get you all the kudos and credits. Sorry for that.
Used to have an easier name to pronounce her, right? Just call him Scott K. or, yeah.
Smith, Jones.
Smith, yeah. Jones is a, yeah, that's a good one there, too.
You've got two of those. Good morning, Dr. Ruda. What can we do for you?
Morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Wanted to formally just provide an overview of our request. We've met on two different occasions with Robert and his staff, leading into just being able to talk through on this request. You have, you should have there with you just the, really kind of the summation. This particular request is about a year, a year in the works. For this past year, we've been working with our Construction Trades Advisory Board as well as the Southwest Kansas Builders Association, really looking at how it is that we can be responsive and be helping to address what is being seen here locally on the need for contractors, laborers, and and also really looking at additional programs specifically in plumbing, to really start moving the needle on the needs that have been identified through Fannie County Economic Development, city and the county, for housing needs and else. This specific request comes in front of you really looking at as a part of being responsive and meeting the needs. There becomes space, space allocation and and needs for additional space in order to expand our current construction trades program. Currently, we have a one semester, sixteen credit hour program. Our plan is to be able to expand and offer a one-year as well as an associate's degree in construction trades going forward, and also looking at adding a plumbing program as part of our curriculum. there as well. In order to do this, we have outlined a, an expansion for this particular program, being able to construct a forty by a hundred training center that would provide both shop space and classroom space. This is, is similar in size to the John Deere AgTech expansion that we just recently completed on campus. So very, very similar in size on that end. Through our conversations with Southwest Kansas Builders Association, as well as our advisory boards, we have put together the plans for this. Within your package, you also have an outline detail of, of what the need locally is on laborers, as well as what the skilled labor in construction trades, plumbing, and other trades would be there as well, that really starts to tell the story for how it is that we need to be identifying new, new positions and being a part of that solution. As a part of this, over the course of the last year, we have, as, as part of our capital project here in this regard, we've been working with Fennep Foundation Board, looking at how it is that we can start to leverage and have some opportunity for matching dollars that can come to the table there as well. And I'm happy to report that in the last month, the Fennep Foundation has pledged three hundred thousand in matching dollars towards this project. We have also leveraged and have an additional two hundred thousand that can be used towards matching dollars in this project as well. All in, we have roughly projected about a one point five to one point seven million dollar budget for construction on this project. So going back, we have five hundred thousand that has been pledged in matching dollars. Those matching dollars need to be secured by the middle of December twenty twenty-four in order for us to leverage and access the Fennep dollars and the other dollars that we currently have, currently have pledged. So to that end, we are, we have presented with the city and are before you today requesting dollars. Our particular request on this end is for two hundred thousand from Fannie County to go towards identifying the, the need and addressing the need and constructing the building that will allow us for expansion to work towards the projected labor shortage that you have in your documents. Again, we've talked with the city as well. We also have several opportunities through the State Department of Commerce, and we have also positioned and put forward a request through the federal government for congressionally designated funds that will go towards equipment and needs for this expansion there as well. So we're leaving no rock unturned. As far as looking at different opportunities, different ways, we will also be, we have secured tax credits that we will be working to sell over the course of this year that will be pledged specifically towards this construction trades program here locally. So we have eight hundred thousand in tax credits that can be sold, and we will use those exclusively towards this project there as well. So really, the, the request before you is just looking at how it is that we can come together, as we always do, as a community, looking at how we can start to help move the needle and address a labor shortage and, and help with the, the needed space that we have for expansion. Request would be, again, for two hundred thousand. As we visited with Robert, you know, that is, there is opportunity where we can be able to, to have that over a, a multi-year option, as far as not having to be all at once. The other opportunity that I would say is if there are additional ARPA dollars that are unallocated, you know, those could be considerations there that we would be willing to discuss and, and talk through with you there as well. But wanted to just be able to present this information, talk to you a little bit about what our plans are, where we are at there currently in our process, and the progress that we are making towards this capital project, and happy to entertain any questions.
My comment from the chair is, is that we just heard from our auditors, and then congratulations to your trustees and your administration of holding down the cost of the community college ad valorem piece of the taxes. And my second thought is, is that I see this as an investment similar to what we're doing with Joe Coles and the workforce solutions, mind effort within our community. And if we can find adequate source of funds, this is something that I'd be interested in doing, and I'll turn it over to any other commissioners that have questions. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Ruda, I'm going to address you formally. I, I admire your effort, and I wholeheartedly agree that what you're pursuing is well worth pursuing. However, I have a, a bit of a hangup in that your tax base is exactly the same as ours. And so if the two hundred thousand has to come out of general funding from the county to facilitate your, your request, then we have added two hundred thousand to our taxpayers and granted two hundred thousand relief to your taxpayers, making some sense in my, in my statement. So I'm wondering if, if it's a worthwhile effort why the Board of Trustees for the community college don't endorse an additional two hundred thousand if it's coming from general funds. If there's some other hidden pot of money somewhere to, in the county or elsewhere to find that two hundred thousand, then I'd be interested in, in listening to that. But right now, being honest with you, my vote would be no. So.
Mr. Dase?
I guess I'd like to follow up a little bit on yours. Has the college looked at adding this number to their capital improvement part of the ad valorem instead of moving it over to our side? I mean, taxpayers are going to pay with it, one or the other.
Hundred percent.
Blamed us for two hundred thousand dollars and not you.
Yeah, so, I mean, fair questions. So the, you know, going back to a couple of points I made, the three hundred thousand that has been pledged by Fennep, we have leveraged. So the additional two hundred thousand is coming from the college at this point. So the additional two hundred thousand that we have for the all-in match of five hundred thousand is being committed by the college. So there is, you know, there is skin in the game. We're not looking for handouts, and we're not sitting here and trying to figure out how the college cannot have, you know, their, their skin in the game there as well. The other piece that I would say, and, and back to, you know, Chair Schultz's point there as well, we were one of the only community colleges that actually decreased their mill levy assessment there this last year. We did so primarily for, for one reason and one reason only. Up until this last year, we were not receiving state capital outlay dollars from the state of Kansas. So we were one of ten community colleges. There's nineteen community colleges in Kansas. We were one of ten that did not receive state capital outlay assessment. Through some advocacy and work, we have been able to secure state, state capital outlay. So we decreased what our, what our local capital outlay was to be responsive for what we're receiving from the state. So, you know, to your question there, have we, have we had conversations about increasing our capital outlay assessment in order to accommodate and, and look towards this particular project and other deferred maintenance? Those are ongoing conversations that we have during our budget planning and retreat sessions here over the next few months. I think a lot of what we're looking at is just how we can collectively look at all options on the table. You're right. I mean, it's, it's on the back of taxpayers either way you look at it. But we, we have committed and came, came forward there with the additional two hundred thousand from the college to match what the Fennep Foundation has, but also to be able to leverage and show that there's actually five hundred thousand available and, and one-to-one matching dollars available at this point through the end of the year.
Other questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ryan. I won't be quite as formal as our other.
Yeah.
Well, I too want to preface my comment by saying I really appreciate what the community college has done and, and how responsive you've tried to be to, whether it be the John Deere program or other kinds of programs, the technical side, if you will, as well as college prep, you know, courses and so forth out of the community college. You're doing an outstanding job and, and really looking at the budget and so forth. I had a question related to Dave and what Dave expressed, so I won't go over that. My question then, subsequent to that, and I'm looking right at one of the most active members of the Builders Association as my eyesight here. My question is this. Has the Builders Association, I know they've had input on the need and so forth, but have they been engaged on the fundraising side for this and, and to what extent? And then secondly, tied to that, I noticed in your, or I noted in your narrative, the high schools, Deerfield, et cetera, et cetera, that are getting dual credit. And have those entities or the counties outside of Fannie, have they been engaged yet in this fundraising effort since they're going to benefit also from, from that building and from the increased trades? And so help me understand a little bit more about who's been engaged and who you've talked to. And then lastly, when one would have, what would be the date that you would have to have a decision from this body? So entities, Southwest Builders, other schools and so forth, and then the, the firm deadline?
Absolutely. Yeah, so, you know, to your first question, as far as the Southwest Kansas Builders Association, they have been extremely active. We've met with, with their board and their collective body on several occasions. They have, they have came to this point over the last several years, they have came, came forward and pledged and put dollars specifically towards scholarships for students in this program. And so for the past three years, they have been very active in having anywhere between ten thousand annually that they put towards scholarships. So they have been in a valuable resource on that end, just to be able to help offset costs and, and defer cost on that end. To your question, as far as the school districts, again, so we are in year three of our construction trades program. And just in, just to put things in perspective, right now, we only serve Garden City and Holcomb School Districts there with our carpentry trades program. And why is that? Because we have one instructor. And so because of safety concerns and things that we had to follow regulation-wise, we're limited to only being able to have a one-to-fifteen ratio. So we have fifteen students in the morning, fifteen students in the afternoon that are specifically serving Fannie County, Fannie County High School students. Each of the school districts, Holcomb and Garden City, since the inception of this program, we cost share the, the cost of the instructor. So Holcomb School District, Garden City School District, and the college each put in one-third towards the instructor as far as salary and benefits. So there is absolutely benefit that we have seen in the partnerships and the work and pledging funds to go towards supporting this program. As we go forward, those are similar conversations that we have had with the other school districts, because we also know that we will need an additional faculty member as we expand, as we expand there as well. So part of our conversations have been replicating and, and looking at how we build that model out, similar to success that we've had with Holcomb and Garden City, and being able to have a cost-sharing model that, that helps support the other school districts in our service area as well. There's been good responsiveness and good feedback that we've had that as this materializes and comes forward, that the, the school boards are open and willing to that conversation and discussion, because we can show success that has happened over the last three years and, and how we've built this program. As far as the timeline and your question on the timeline, you know, again, I think really just there's two different facets. One is the, the one-to-one matching dollars that are available. We have a December fourteenth deadline in order to match and secure those funds. As far as moving forward with the project, you know, ideally, you know, we would like to, we would like to have an answer for sure here by this fall or leading into that December timeline. On that end, the project will not go forward until the funds are obviously secured. You know, but there's a lot of different variables. What we're looking at with the state, you know, the grants, and we've had conversations with Department of Commerce. Those particular grants don't come open until this fall. The congressional direct spending, we've already put the request in, in front of Senator Moran. That'll be going forward in the appropriations is next year, but we won't know until next spring whether those dollars have been secured there or not. So, you know, we're, we're looking at all different options. This is absolutely a priority on our end at the community college and our budget discussions as well. And the other piece that I would say, just going back to, to Chair Schultz, is we have been extremely engaged with Joe Coles and the work that, that he's doing there on workforce development. We're at, we're at each of the workshops that they have. We present. We have, we have our presence down there because that is a critical piece for us, even outside of dual credit. That's a critical piece in that recruitment process of being able to connect and, and recruit those students into any of our tech programs. So that's been a valuable resource that we've engaged with as well.
A couple of follow-up comments, Mr. Chair, is, one, we're heading into our budget setting as I know, working on that there. And, and so I think it gives us, what you're saying to me, it gives us time to see whether there's dollars that might be available to do this. And I appreciated your comment that could be over a multi-year, years or, you know, something you didn't say three.
Correct.
You know, something like that. But also, just for the public's knowledge, within our budgeting process, not only do we do the showcases, finance, to support economic development, to, to try to produce them, educate them here, produce them here, keep them here, but we also put in several hundred thousand into economic development corporation through Fannie County. So I want people to understand, no matter what our answer might be going forward, this body is pro economic development, grow, growing them here and keeping them here. So whatever answer we might get, you know, give sometime in the next month or two, or whatever it might be, is certainly not indicative, not be saying otherwise, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And then my last question. You mentioned the ten community colleges that did get or didn't get the capital outlay, but why would Garden City not have been a recipient of that? Just help me understand just a little bit better what that is all about.
Yeah, great question. So again, putting things in perspective, nineteen community colleges, nine community colleges back in the, the late eighties, early nineties, as part of some state realignment consolidated with career and technical schools. So the nine schools that consolidated and really took the vocational, the area vocational schools under their umbrella, became privy to, to being able to have state capital outlay dollars. Garden City did not have an area of a tech school that they consolidated with or merged with at that time. So the ten community colleges, Garden City being one of them, up until last year, did not have state capital dollars available.
Even though we were producing.
Even though we're, we're one of the highest producers on technical education, and that was, that was our advocacy that really told the story about the need. You know, we're producing more than many of the schools that are, they're receiving this benefit.
I had missed that piece of information, so thank you for clarifying. That helps me understand a whole lot. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Quick question. The, you need the two hundred thousand to get matching funds? And you have till December to raise that two hundred thousand?
Correct. Correct.
You know, I'm kind of like Commissioner Dave, that, you know, we, we all work off the same folks. All the same taxpayers come to us every year complaining about their taxes being too hot. And I was just wondering maybe if we, if there was some way, you know, we could grant you a loan, would that get you over the hump to get your matching funds? That's what I'm looking, because that way, we, with some way, come up with the money for a loan.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think all options are on the table. I mean, I think there's considerations that we can, that we can definitely look at. You know, this particular request, and I am, you know, I, I can understand the, you know, the concern and the skepticism that at the end of the day, it's on the, it's on the backs of our taxpayers, regardless of how it is that we look at it there as taxing entities. You know, I think this particular request, again, comes, comes before you just as we look at really the, the strategic plans of the county, the city, the college. As we're putting these types of, of projects together, we're not just looking at what it is that benefits Garden City Community College. We're not looking at only our, our strategic plans. This is really aligning, you know, very honestly, to, to the community at large. I think it's very similar, you know, as, as we've, over the last two years, really looked at bringing bachelor's degree completion programs here to Garden City. You know, that was, that was very much a request and things that we heard from, from other taxing entities on the need to retain the talent pipeline here in Garden City. So, you know, we're, we're working at Garden City Community College to really look at collectively how it is that we best serve this community, which, which does. which, which does very well support the work of, of all of its taxing entities. So, you know, I think in, in your question, you know, not to, not to dismiss options that are on the table as far as loans. You know, I think the, the opportunity to come here and just say, are there, are there abilities to have discussions, you know, whether that's through ARPA or other funds that, that may have been allocated or available in the past that could be specifically towards economic development and things that we can strategically work on there together? Not knowing your budget to the degree that you do, those are things that I guess I would propose to look at there just in opportunities that may even be outside of, of locally assessed tax funds.
Anything else, Commissioners?
I want to make a point. When I came to Garden City in 1980, there was a building construction program at the college, Ryan, that they build a house every year. And, and I saw that as very worthwhile effort because the students learn all kinds of trades from plumbing, electrical, you name it. I would love to see that come back. I would, I would work that in any way I can. That doesn't change my position on which taxpayer ought to fund the 200,000 you're requesting. But as far as I know, we don't have any, I don't know where we are in ARPA funding, but I, and I don't know what your discussions, I'm sorry, but your discussions were with Robert and staff. But if we have to put that burden on, on the general taxpayer, as I said, my vote's no. Otherwise, I'm fully supportive of your effort. And I think most of the folks in the coffee shop would be very supportive. So.
Commissioner Driz?
Just, I'm going to piggyback on it. I have no problem with economic development. If you can run $200,000 through economic development back in, like, yeah, but brick and mortar. I, I just have a problem with supporting another entity's brick and mortar. So if you can run it through economic development somehow and we reimburse the economic development, I have no problem. But just to, just to go to brick and mortar for another issue, I have, I have a problem.
Finally, my question is, is that, on the timing, so that you can receive your maxing funds. December is the deadline. You'd like to know by September, October?
Correct.
Right. I think the one question that I have that we can discuss publicly is what's the ARPA balance? I know, it's right off, it's, it's only one of 250 balances, sir.
No, 300.
300, excuse me.
Jenny Hamel, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director. There are no ARPA funds left. There is interest left in that fund, but we were notified by iParametrics that that does not technically fall to the ARPA. We have to do some more research on figuring out what's left in there, but there's less than $100,000.
And that's interest?
Correct.
All right. Very good. All right, Commissioner Fishney has one more remarkable question in less than five minutes.
I've, I've asked the, I've asked for consideration for the last comment on this. I want to let you know that it's, it's not easy to forget the mission of the community college and you do a great job of producing positive contributors to the economic and social well-being of society.
Well said.
As an old trustee, you did a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As an old trustee.
Oh, oh.
Didn't even have to look anywhere there when you recited that, that's good.
It's been memorized since 1995.
Dr. Ruda, we're going to take your West Under advisement, and we appreciate your presentation along with Scott Madrosik. And I think I got his name correct this time.
Close.
Close. All right. Scott, thank you for coming today and being supportive of your president and all the trustees who work very hard at holding the line on costs for all of us taxpayers. We appreciate the mission of the college and the opportunity to assist in this vital economic development.
All right. Happy to answer any of the questions you have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to take a break. We will be back in session at 10 minutes after 10. Thank you.
Session back to order.
I'm surprised.
At ten ten.
Saw the action last time, so.
We have next up, Alisa Charles. Please announce yourself for the viewing public regarding a waiver at forty-one fifty East Schulman.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Alisia Charles, Assistant Neighborhood and Development Services Director. So on June nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, the property owner at forty-one fifty East Schulman Avenue requested a waiver to allow a permanent storage container. At that meeting, the Board of County Commissioners granted a temporary six-month waiver with the condition that the property is not grandfathered in as a prior zoning change and that the landowner comply with the new regulations adopted. At the November twenty-two thousand and twenty-four meeting, staff presented four options for a future storage container amendment. During that meeting, the Board of County Commissioners did not direct staff to move forward with an amendment as it would like to be reviewed at the time Finney County presented new zoning regulations, and the property owner was given a six-month extension for the temporary waiver. Neighborhood and Development Services visited with the county, and at this time, there is no update for new zoning regulations. And just to add on that, I did talk with McKenzie a little bit on kind of the update, and my understanding is they would like to start that process this year and kind of continue that over to next year to really get that going. So if the governing body chooses to approve this waiver, staff recommends that the governing body require the applicant to comply with the provisions in section twenty-three point zero seven zero B two through four in the Finney County zoning regulations. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the waiver or the governing body may not approve the waiver. Since there is no set timeline for updated zoning regulations, staff would recommend that the governing body approve or not approve the waiver. If you approve, I would recommend that the waiver just be for the entire time. No, not as a temporary waiver, would be a full effect waiver. But that is just staff recommendation today.
Questions for Ms. Charles? Sir?
I not only have a question, I have a comment. How long are we going to make these people wait before we come up with a decision? This has been going on now for months, and right next door to them virtually is another container that we're not acting on. So when the time is appropriate, I'm ready to offer a motion to grant a waiver and let them get on with life. So that's my comment.
Anything else from Commissioners?
I would be just interested in our council and administrators' comments.
Well, we'll start with Administrator.
You know, I think on this case, if I recall the circumstances under it, is that they acted initially with the best information that they had to place that container on their property. And in retrospect, they were informed then that it did not comply.
Counsel?
I really think at this point in time, it's the Board's decision on what it is that they would like to do with this, whether we're going to piecemeal accept waivers of these across the board, or if we're looking at the bigger picture with the redoing of the regulations.
Okay, I think that on this one, we're going to have a motion shortly to grant the piecemeal. Is that going to be something that hinders your ability to enforce a new code?
I don't believe it hinders the ability to enforce a new code. It's essentially, this one's like any other number of the grandfathered-in properties that have, whether it's a storage container or something else, that was in place prior to the enactment of the code as it stands now.
Okay, so what we want to do is follow the staff recommendation to comply with the provisions, the landowner comply with the provisions of section twenty-three point zero seven zero B two to four, but that the governing body approve the waiver permanently.
Which is what?
Correct. So that is staff's recommendation, and I will add, the property owner is requesting that they not meet the requirements of the building code, and that would be the foundation and the anchoring of the storage container.
Okay, we'll take that up for discussion, and we'll go first from left to right. Commissioner Jones?
Well, the weight of that unit is almost enough anchor. And why we want to make them put a cement foundation or whatever the foundation under that, it's been sitting there for how long? Couple years?
Almost three years.
Yeah. And it hadn't fallen down yet. As I've said before on this topic, those storage containers are far better built than the little eighty-nine-dollar storage building you get at the local box store that blows away in the middle of the night. So my motion would be, if given the opportunity to offer one, let it sit like it is and grant a waiver.
Okay, the landowners are present. Commissioner Pishney wants to give them the opportunity to speak to the commission. Do the landowners wish to address the commission? If you do, come to the microphone and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Abby Frye, Jo Frye. We were just wanting to make sure about the building permit, that we don't have to put the foundation under it and anchor it, because that was the whole point of trying not to move it, because it is empty. It weighs forty-six thousand pounds, from what I looked up. So it's a pretty stout structure. So that's the only thing I would like. If you do grant it, please let us not have to do that.
All right, don't walk away. Please stand for questions. Commissioners, do you have anything of the taxpayer? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alisia, Commissioner, excuse me, left to right. Commissioner Dries, sir?
I noticed that, okay, does the industrial development part of the quarter-mile waste from this residence, or do they have the same restrictions to be on a slab and anchored?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pishney?
Well, just to Alisia, so the staff's recommendation about the foundation anchoring and so forth is to be consistent with other properties, or was there concern about the weight of the container or things like that that entered into that recommendation?
No, our recommendation is just based off our current zoning and the building code, since there have been other industrial properties and commercial that have done it and have done the slab or the foundation and the anchoring.
And then, Mr. Chairman, my overall comment is, I'm not opposed to granting the waiver. However, what I'm wondering is, we've been waiting to revise these, and this is not pointing fingers at anybody. I know we've had so much on our plate, but how many more waivers are we going to have between now and the time, requests between now and the time that the regulations are reviewed?
I don't know how many we're going to have, but I know that we have time to consider them if they're urgent. This one seems to be to the point that Commissioner Jones wants to take some action on it. Landowners have been very patient. The city has been, and NDS and Ms. Charles have been diligent to their task of uniform enforcement and application of the existing codes as they are written by us. So any other comment, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Davy Jones, you have a motion?
I have a motion to grant the waiver for that container to sit where it is without any foundation requirement under it until it is moved at the owner's request. When it moves, then the waiver's over.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to allow the waiver for the continuation of the structure as it is without compliance of the provisions of twenty-three zero seven zero B two through four. That motion and second is now before the commission. Is there any further discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just one clarification. So where this container is, is zoned rural residential, but there's commercial stuff right next to it? Am I understanding that correctly, or real close to it?
Yeah, real close to it, I would say.
But the property they're on is zoned rural.
Is residential, that is correct.
The waiver we're making is in a rural residential.
Correct, yeah. It would be specific to their property.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Jones? All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, folks. On our agenda is a waiver request for thirty-one oh four West Jones. I'm advised by McKenzie Phillips, Development Administrative Coordinator, that at the request of the landowner, that they want to table this for another session, so the landowner can be present. Is that correct, McKenzie? Please come up and address the viewing public.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. Yes, that's correct. The property owner is not able to make it today, but he should be able to be here at the next meeting, so they are requesting to table it until the next meeting.
All right, well, we're not going to table it any further. The problem that we have with the next session is we may not have all of us then. We'll just take whatever chips we have at the next session on the seventeenth of June.
Okay.
Encourage the landowner or other persons to be present for this on the agenda. So we'll set that over for agenda planning for the next session.
Thank you.
Last item on our business agenda is from Sheriff Warren, addendum to the Advanced Correctional Health contract.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mike Warren, Finney County Sheriff. So Iron Insurance Partners, on behalf of Travelers, I think they'd looked over our contract with ACH, Advanced Correctional Health. Anyway, they requested that the following be addressed in current jail medical contract with Advanced Correctional Health, ACH, provisions requiring the contractor to maintain insurance and hold the county harmless, having the contractor and any of the subcontractors list the county as an additional insured on primary and non-contributory basis and hold, holding the county harmless for their work. So background, County Councilor Kara Schartz worked with the legal staff of ACH to draft an amendment. So alternatives approved the amendment and authorized the sheriff to sign the first amendment to the agreement for the management of the correctional healthcare contract, or decline to approve the direct staff as to next steps. Staff recommends alternative one, approve the amended, and authorize the sheriff to sign the first amendment to the agreement for the management of the correctional healthcare contract.
That's what staff wants to do, was the sheriff want to do?
I think what they're trying to get at, in my opinion here, just by reading this amendment, is basically anything that the ACH does, we don't want to be held if they do something wrong, and I think the same on their part. So I have no problems with that. I think that's probably a good idea. If their nurse does something, we certainly don't want to be sued for that.
Thank you. Questions from the commission, and we'll switch it to the counselor. Then, Kara, Ms. Schartz, this contract we should approve and authorize the sheriff to sign?
Yes.
All right, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this contract as presented and authorize the sheriff to sign it.
Second?
Seconded to authorize the contract, authorize the sheriff to sign, approve the contract, authorize the sheriff to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sign the contract, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have our administrator's report. We believe we have the fire incident report that we have reviewed. Mr. Administrator, do you want to go to the development update? All right, we'll hear now from McKenzie.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I don't have many updates for you this morning. Country Acres, they are starting to build the house out there. The basement has been poured. Also, when I was out there last week, I noticed multiple lots have been sold, so they are starting to sell those off. I haven't checked after the rain that we received this weekend, but after the rain that we received last week, it didn't look like we were having any washout over on Farmland Road, and that detention pond was holding water. So we're, we're holding pretty good right there, right now, so. Randall Estates, we, as far as I know, they're still working on the roads and the ditches. With the rain last week, we didn't get out there. And then, we are working on, I know there's a request from Commissioner Jones from the last meeting to have updated aerials on the development updates, and we are working on that. So we will have, I think Country Acres is at least done, so I'll have that updated next, next time for the next meeting. And then, just one update, we do, we did start today the chip, the twenty-two-four chip ceiling project. They started, they were going to be starting over on Third Street, but with standing water, they're no longer starting there today. They did start on West Kansas and Humphrey and Massey Ferguson area, so they will be out there working.
What a problem, standing water. I'm sure the arions on this panel will just have to suffer through the standing water. Anything else, McKenzie?
That's it.
Questions for Development and Administrative Coordinator? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now to the administrator's report, sir.
Commissioners, we do have a couple meetings this week for the Law Enforcement Center. Justice Planners will be here, they're arriving late today, will be here all day Tuesday and Wednesday. You all are all scheduled for that, as well as other stakeholders for that, to go through the interviewing process with them, so they can move this project forward and clearly define some options for the commission to consider. Additionally, for next meeting on the seventeenth, we'll have KDOT here, and we'll review the eighty-three project and the miles of road that are being proposed, being turned over to the county. There's approximately five miles of that for, so we'll go through that process. In addition to that, you'll hear the request once again on whether or not the county is wanting to move forward on that tunnel underneath there for bike path. So we'll need to have, they'll need to have a determination by the county on whether or not that, that particular aspect of the project you want to move forward with. They should have a cost, estimated cost for that, for you to consider. Additionally, on June eleventh, you do have Goldberg Group coming in for the EMS Health Department facility. You've received the latest and greatest floor plan for that, so we'll be reviewing that. We'll go through the soils test, which didn't turn up anything extraordinary there from Terracotta. But we'll review that, and we'll begin moving that project forward. Your construction manager will be involved during that meeting as well. And once again, that's on June eleventh.
Do you have a targeted date for ceremony for groundbreaking?
Not at this point in time, not at this point in time.
Quick question. Do they have a footprint of that building decided?
They do have a draft footprint. We can send out, we can send out to all the Commissioners. Yeah. Let's see, did, did do some follow-up. Commissioner Pishney had brought to my attention a sewer backup in District Two. Did get a response from our workers there that that project, the, the clog in that sewer, in essence, was from construction up there on the subdivision, Sunset Terrace subdivision. What we'll do is, we'll go ahead and close that connection off. We keep, we continue to get dirt, sludge, construction debris in that sewer system which clogs us and backs up into the current residents there in Towns River View. So we're, we've got that cleaned out, and we'll plug that off, so that, so that won't occur again.
Appreciate that.
Very good. Any other questions for me this morning? Okay? I'm sorry? Work session, work session, July one?
Following general session.
Correct. So we'll.
Meet with all the department heads, budget review, and lunch will be provided.
Correct, that is correct. All right.
County Councilor?
Just as to the tax sale information update, we did have one additional property that paid, and I did check with the treasurer this morning, which is just a little over eleven thousand dollars for that one property. The property owner for that one actually did contact me after having made that payment. She did have concerns about the fact that she'd been paying all of her other ones, and this one somehow didn't get to her address. So, but reminder to the taxpayers to make sure that they're, they're looking at all of their properties and not assuming that they're paying them all, because they've paid some. So, just a note.
The easy part is just to call the treasurer, right?
Yes, yes. So I think we've trickled down to the point, we're right about, we're just over the thirty-day mark now from the time that I sent out the letters. I know that I had some that had come back in the middle of that, this being, the one that just got paid actually was one of those that we had researched and found additional addresses for, because she was paying it on the ones that it was going to the right address. Somewhere along the line, this one got switched to a different address, was never coming back to the treasurer's office, so they had no way of knowing that this one wasn't getting to the property owner for that one. And this was one of those ones that's in an estate trust, sort of a situation, so I think fell through. But, and I don't know if there are any other ones in that position, but I'm going to start filing now, so I, that's the position that we're in for the remainder of these, so.
How many you have to file?
I believe we are down to twenty-two properties now, from the original forty-two that we started looking at, so.
Excuse me, Commissioner Pishney?
Well, just a quick question. And one of the memos we had, I think, said we'd collected a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, plus you've mentioned eleven thousand and so forth. My question is this, do we recall what the total outstanding amount was at the beginning? Like, is this, I mean, it's about fifty percent of the properties, but is that, does that equate to fifty percent of what taxes were owed? Probably not.
I don't believe so, and I know that Trista had had a handout for us last time, and I actually don't have it with us, what the total amount were that were still outstanding. With the amounts that were paid last time, we're a hundred and thirty, just a little over a hundred and thirty-five thousand with this, we're at just a little, well, almost a hundred and forty-seven thousand that have been paid now at this point in time. I don't believe that it equates to half even.
All right, hold on, we're going to hear from the treasurer.
Yeah, Trista Joyce County Treasurer. So I'd like to remind you, so this list was originally compiled in two thousand and twenty-one, so I can go back and look and see what was outstanding at that time, or we can do it from the beginning of this year.
Well, it's, it's not worth a lot of staff time.
Okay.
I was just wondering, just curious if it's about half of the total dollars, not the properties, but total dollars.
Sure, and that, and I can go back and look at that and give you a better idea.
Don't spend an ordinary amount of staff time on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Well, one of those was with the fees, penalties and fees, was over eighty thousand on that list that you sent out. on that list that you sent out.
It's a commercial business, I believe.
I don't know what all was involved, but.
I'll ask the counselor to get that information directly to the commissioners, and we'll go ahead and go to board government. Do you have anything else for the counselor commissioners? I'm sorry, I'm jumping on the, here we go. Board Governance, Madam Clerk, uh before you start this, uh would like to remind everyone that noon today is the filing deadline for uh changing parties. Uh today's the filing deadline for um candidacy for office.
Need to hurry. It's a view.
Okay, apparently neither of you in a very big hurry. And did I miss any other election deadlines, Madam Clerk?
Uh not at this time. The next major uh deadline would be July sixteenth, and that is the registration deadline.
To vote.
To vote.
You can't change your party then, you gotta change your party today.
You have to change your party today, so if you're a Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, New Labels Kansas, or United Kansas party member, then you're, you can change today. As a reminder, this is a Republican Democrat ballots are what we will have. We do have a city sales tax question, um which means that uh voters that are in those other parties could vote a question-only ballot. So it's a little confusing. We're gonna try to get some information out about um eligibility and what ballot you're eligible for based on your party for this election, so.
Okay, uh Madam Clerk, upcoming events, do you have anything to add to what was posted in our agenda?
No, sir.
Anything else that we need to know about?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh this would be, I guess this is under governance. I got a request from K L P G about uh commissioners to serve on the um economic lifelines in the state of Kansas that had this since eighty-nine, and so I'd, I would, I would fulfill Penny County's portion of it if they needed one.
Well, that's, it sounds like a volunteer, and I think that you.
One a few times.
Okay, well, I think that uh absent someone objecting, you are hereby appointed.
I'll give this, see if you can notify.
I'm supposed to do something?
Well, just notify that Larry is our representative.
Just notify Doug.
Doug. Designated representative. All right, very good. Commissioner reports right to left, Commissioner Jones.
Uh the only thing I have to report is a meeting that we had with the city over at Development, uh N D S.
It would go well.
Go what, went well.
All right, very good. You got another meeting set, or we got some work to do in between?
Uh we've got another meeting. Did they set it?
I don't, I don't believe that we set it yet. They were gonna send out a doodle pool, poll again to do that one, but we're looking at trying to do that very last week of June.
I think our deadline for notice is July first.
I think there was some talk about that as well.
Moving the deadline.
About perhaps moving that deadline by agreement of both entities.
November one, I think.
So, uh Mr. Domanruth, who's counsel for um the city, um had indicated he was gonna try to get something over this week to me as a proposal for that agreement, to move it, so that um you guys can hopefully look at it maybe at our, either probably our next meeting.
Perhaps it should be a short addendum to the inter-local agreement.
Correct.
Very good. Anything else, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Pishney?
I would just add to that, that uh subbing for our chair at that meeting on Friday uh with regard to N D S, uh focus was primarily on the red line version that uh we sent to them to the city a year ago, and also a lot of discussion about development processes. So uh I I think, I too uh believe there was some headway made in in the meeting the other day, so. And uh and well, and then other than that, just a variety of meetings and so forth, but nothing that I believe uh needs to be referenced here today, so. And then, yes, an addendum comments.
Since it's Beef Empire Days and there's lots of events down at the fairgrounds, um I've been down there several times, and one common fact that a lot of people complain to me about is the sound system in the stadium is, can't hear a thing, but the announcers are saying about the bits going on in the arena. I think we need to look at that as a capital improvement plan somewhere along, addressing the sound system.
Mr. Administrator, you'll find the budgetary money for that and the cash?
Sure.
Very good.
Depends what else we wanna decrease. Uh I do have one addendum, too.
We may never get to you.
Yeah, you will, you will. I I had written it down, but I forgot. The fireworks thing about not uh being able to discharge with, outside the city limits, and and I'm assuming that that's still in play, even though we've had a little rain, and I thought we might have another report today at our meeting, but evidently we won't have a report till next uh meeting possibly. But I was going, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't stepping out too far ahead, but I wanted to get it out on our websites for our development areas. Uh we've got two websites out, uh or Facebook pages, not websites. We've got two Facebook pages because I don't think the people know that they're not able to discharge. So am I inappropriate by telling them to go ahead and post that on our, the Facebook pages?
I think we should, make sure that right now, the current resolution is that there'll be no discharge of fireworks outside incorporated cities.
I.
That greatly disappoints uh some folks that are related to me, but I think that we will hear from the chief on the seventeenth, and it'll be an item on the agenda, whether to change that or keep it in place, and we'll better know in fourteen days or so how the weather.
So I maybe should wait until that meeting before I have them post something?
Well, right now, it's snow.
I believe, I believe that the current resolution, I apologize for interrupting, but I believe that the current resolution allows for the discharge, and so if if you're going to back that off, you would need the new resolution.
No, the motion that was made, and it might have been.
There was no motion because it's a resolution that would have to be, I mean, you guys made a motion to update the resolution, but that resolution has not been updated yet. So you are under the old resolution, which allows for discharge outside the city limits.
Well, we were, we were trying to comply with the fire chief, which was not outside the city limits, and review it in June.
Well, let's have it on the agenda for the seventeenth, and we'll have a proper resolution at that time.
The resolution's in works at this point. The resolution's in works at this point and should be um ready prior to our meeting next week.
And I think we have a publication issue uh with regard to the resolution. We may have to adjourn to allow the clerk to run, to get the uh resolution.
Um as long as Kara gets that to me in time, I can have it all ready to go and push the button. We should, we should be fine as long as we have it at the top of the agenda.
All right.
Well, my only reason for bringing it up, I don't want to alarm people if it's unnecessary, and at this point, it's my understanding that we were not going to allow that outside the city limits.
Mr. Chairman?
I will, I will let Mr. Pishney finish.
No, I, I'm done.
All right, then.
I agree with Lon, what the action we took, as I understood it, was to allow no fireworks discharge outside of the two corporate limits of the city, and then we would revisit it before the Fourth of July, depending on rainfall, it could be changed, so.
Uh we could pull those minutes, but the motion was to have the resolution updated to that effect. However, the resolution has not been updated yet.
We'll get it done the way that we wanted it done, and we can do that on the seventeenth, and if the weather changes and it turns off hot and dry, we may have to stick with changing the resolution, and Kara will have that. Madam Counselor, you'll have that ready for signature one way or the other?
I will, I've just sent it, I have sent it off to administration, so we're working through um final tweaks.
All right, so that will be on the agenda for the seventeenth, and all those that attend planning, help remind me, please. Okay, now, Commissioner Driz, after considerable interruptions, what is your report, sir?
I have no report.
Very good, thank you.
But I do have a comment. Uh Larry, to speak to your rodeo deal, I've visited Stephanie over the years about that. Most contractors supply their own sound systems.
These were, this was all Beef Empire Days events.
The events.
Events there, and they, and they, you know, they rent the fairgrounds.
Stephanie does not have that on her really high wishlist, I can tell you that. Maybe it needs to be.
But I think if you, if you're gonna continue to rent it to people that are using it for their events.
I would agree. Tractor pull is another example.
Where the people in the grandstands can understand what they're saying.
Not gonna argue. Done.
He hasn't asked me yet.
Oh.
He's gonna have to say please.
Mr. Jones, would you please give me your report and the rest of the commissioners, please? That's twice.
I only had one meeting, and that was the library board. It was a routine meeting, and so really nothing to report other than L S and S had a a person on the ground here in Garden City, and and it was nice to see somebody from corporate. Then the next day, they closed the library for, in service, so that's my report.
All right, mine is that I uh prepared for the N D S meeting and was unable to attend, and I thank Commissioner Pishney for sitting in for me, and will continue to work and collaborate with the city and the commissioners, Mayor Ortiz, Vice Mayor and staff. We really want to get that hammered out, and council will get the addendum done so that we can extend that time while we're bringing this negotiation to a a final conclusion for the benefit of the taxpayers. I also attended the Compass Aerial Mental Health Board Meeting, and to let everyone know, uh we will not, that board will not meet in June, but will then uh again meet in July. This board meeting was highly indicative of the incredible growth that that organization has had because of the C C H B C designation. Kudos to the executive staff of Aerial Mental Health on a job well done. We should have for Compass a final ruling on that designation as a community-based healthcare provider, and that designation is huge, and it should be final in July, and I hope to be able to report in the August general session of this commission, the outcome of of that outside agency, Compass Aerial Mental Health. With that, is there any more business to come before the commissioner comments? And I would, Commissioner Driz really liked to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
And Commissioner Jones?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Nothing else before the commission, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, men.